Twenty twenty five at exactly six oh two P M. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Merlingowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
If you are able, please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have any additions, additions or deletions or modifications to the agenda? If not, may I please have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What do we got, Mr.?
Yes, we have a last minute add on. It's a extension of the solid waste contract between now and September thirtieth. We finally came to terms with waste management. So it's extending the current contract until September thirtieth while we're finishing up the bid.
Thirty for this year?
This year. Yes, sir.
So we're extending the existing contract?
Correct. They've been operating without a contract for the last eight months.
Okay.
They were kept pushing for a two year extension and I kept saying no because we're going with the one year of anything. They finally came to their senses and decided that an extension to the September thirtieth while we're going out for bid is appropriate for them.
So we're currently in July.
Yes.
So we're trying to extend till for three for ninety days?
Correct.
And it's going to take us, I'm assuming, at least ninety days?
Correct. And there's also a clause in it that if we can't not come to terms with the new vendor, there's an additional ninety day extension built into this.
Okay, so we have six months to vet all the bids.
No, the game, the game plan is to have everything done by your September meeting, sir.
Okay, is there any kind of increase?
I don't know until the bids come in.
No, no, no.
Respectfully, Mayor.
No.
This would be more appropriate to bring it into the agenda.
All right, let's, you're, you're absolutely, you're absolutely correct, Counselor. Um, I need a motion to add the waste management extension into the existing agenda.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Would you identify where you're going to put it?
Let's add it into new business. Um.
Okay. That's appropriate. Item C. E B C. We already have A and B.
All right, so let's make it new business at item C.
I second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Councilwoman Gleason.
Thank you. Motion by Councilwoman Gleason, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call. Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Gleason. Roll call. Councilwoman Gleason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. I am going to open for public comment. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk, but it's okay if you did not. Don't fret. Uh, when you are called to speak, please go to the podium and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response if necessary, or I will have staff follow up with you at a later time. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We have a public comment from Ms. Stormy Bivin.
Hello.
Name and address for the record, please.
Stormy Bivin, one six one zero zero Key Biscayne Lane, Westlake, Crestwood, Florida.
Welcome. What do you have for us today?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, staff. In November, I was here with another Wellington Garden Club member, and we addressed Council with an idea for an installation of a Blue Star Memorial Marker in our future civic park. I am here just to get an update, to find out where that timing is, where we are on the park. For your information, when I was here, it was being included in our budget, our proposed budget for our garden club. It was passed by all of our members, so we have funded this project in our twenty five, twenty six budget. So we're ready to go. So I'm here to find out
Yes.
the status of the park.
Thank you so much for your comment. Um, I was going to reserve this for my council comments, but literally as of yesterday, so I've got news for everyone, including the public. So we had six hundred thousand dollars in appropriations with Tallahassee pending. That's what we submitted for. Um, at one point it got cut to three hundred and then it got put back. We didn't cut it, they did up in, in Tallahassee. Then it got put back to six hundred. Um, the Senate and the House battled it out. At one point we lost it all. Um, and then, you know, through the work of our lobbyist and our sponsor, who is um, Representative Weinberger, who's our district, she was the sponsor of our appropriation, we managed to get it back into the budget, the full six hundred thousand. It passed the House. It passed the Senate. There was an extended session. Um, and they were four billion dollars off. Long story short, it made it all the way to the governor's desk to where unfortunately, as of yesterday or the day before, it was line item vetoed. So that's six hundred thousand dollars that we thought we hit, which would have been for phase one, it would have got us basically the parking lot to the park. Um, we're trying to do this in a very fiscally responsible approach, um, and not put the city into a dark park. The guy, and it was nothing against Westlake per se, but their governor cut six hundred million dollars of appropriations throughout the entire state, um, and sadly, our six hundred thousand dollars. It was like the little appropriation that could. I mean, we made it all the way there just to get the, the sharp pencil from the governor who, and this is nothing, let me, let me actually commend the governor because he's doing what we're trying to do. He's trying to be extremely financially responsible for the people of Florida. Um, and it, it was more about process, so we were, we were kind of late in the game where we, we didn't go the route that traditionally you would go to get a park funded. Um, and it was a timing situation. Normally you go through something called FERDAP, which is the Department of Environmental Protection. Um, and they did get funded for parks. Um, but because we circumvented that and then straight for an appropriation, the governor basically was not going to give six hundred thousand dollars here when it was, when there's already money for parks that he funded over here. So we ended up on a tax watch situation and long story short, we lost our six hundred thousand. Um, I spoke to our lobbyist today. We have a call set up for after the Fourth of July with the governor's office. They want to help the city of Westlake. They're, they're going to point us through different channels. Um, the parking structure, which is the infrastructure, should get funded through D O T. And then the first phase of our park should get funded through the D E P rather than a, a sponsored appropriation um, through our House representative. So it's not dead by any means. Um, it actually looks, according to the, the phone call he had, um, it actually looks really good, but we're just different avenues of, of getting funded versus the money that we thought we had coming from Tallahassee. So it's super sad because we were almost there to at least get the parking lot money done, but sadly, no. So we're still fully intending on, on moving forward with the project, but it's a matter of how we're going to pay for it. And I think next week or the week after, we'll have a lot more information because um, we still want state money to help us.
Mm hmm.
So we can build this park, but we lost our appropriation. So it's still coming, but we don't know exactly when.
However, we're going to fund the park. The memorial plaque has been approved by the council and is incorporated in the.
It's going to happen. We want it there. I think it's a beautiful idea. We all do. The council agreed.
Mm hmm.
We just don't have the park yet.
So just to remind everyone, because there's a bunch of people back here that may have no idea what this is. This is a Blue Star Memorial Marker, which is a tribute to the armed forces and all those who have defended the United States of America. And it is a bronze plaque that the Wellington Garden Club is one hundred percent funding the installation of, once we get a space for it.
A space for it.
So with all of this being said, our budget is a fiscal, but, um, is a budget from June one through May thirty one, June one twenty five through May thirty one twenty six. If need be, I can go back to our Board of Directors and see if we, if the timing doesn't work before June of twenty six, I can go back. Okay, so that was kind of where I was going, like a ballpark?
Figure twenty seven.
Twenty seven, I think we'll be in good shape.
Okay.
So, you know, the club can put that money back in the budget, but still kind of earmark it for us for the following year.
That's what I think will happen.
We would love it and we welcome it with open arms. I think it's an incredible, you know, honorable addition to our city.
Well, we would love to do it and we would love to do it as soon as there is a spot for it. So thank you for the update.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bevan. Do we have any more comments from the public? Ma'am, did, uh, you wanted to speak the last? Did you want to, did you have a comment, ma'am? Yeah. This is public comment now on, on, you've got three minutes to talk about anything you might like.
Hi. My name is Donna Peters. I live at fifty nine eighty six Whipper Will Circle. I'm new to Westlake. I moved in last August of twenty twenty four and, uh, a couple of questions. I'm sure you'll be able, be able to give me a quick answer. Uh, in moving here, uh, by the realtors, uh, they were telling us that there would be a park where there would be sixteen pickleball courts and six tennis courts, and I don't see anything happening in that area. A lot of people are talking about it. Everybody wants these pickleball courts and tennis, like so popular in all these areas. And the other question I'm asking for somebody else, where is the Lowe's and when is the Lowe's going to start building in the area? That was brought up to me and then also about a Walmart, possibly leave a Walmart being built here.
I can answer all three of those questions relatively quickly. I don't know if you just heard my whole spiel on the park.
I know.
Appropriation funds. Um, we.
But your partner.
Yeah, so we didn't get the funding that we thought was coming and we're searching, we're looking for alternative funding methods in order to build the park.
Okay.
So we don't have to have taxpayer dollars in order to build it. Um, so that's answer number one. Number two, Lowe's is still in comments back and forth with planning, um, but that's going to be over there behind Publix. Like if you're looking at Publix back into the right.
Oh, back in that area?
Yep.
Because someone said it was going to be across from the sales.
And we don't know anything about Walmart.
Yeah.
It's not back. It's, it's north of.
I was told it was going to be by the sales, across from the sales.
West is not on this side. It's on the other side.
West side, west side of.
Same side as Publix.
Of Seminole Prep.
Yeah.
Okay.
West side, set way back.
Yeah. So those funds, whenever they're allocated, that's supposed to be for this park to develop?
So we, we were seeking funds from, from the state.
From the state, so you don't have to.
We got all the way to the governor's desk and included this budget and he vetoed it.
A line item.
Yep. So we're, we've got a meeting set up for next, after the fourth. We have a meeting, uh, set up with the governor's chief of staff, um, where they want to help Westlake.
Yeah.
We're just going to find other, more proper ways of funding.
Probably not till twenty seven then, right?
Um, I don't know. It's, it's.
Might something in twenty twenty six?
We don't know until we know. We know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Bye bye.
Madam Clerk, do we have another comment card?
We have a comment card from Mr. Barbie Farber.
Mr. Farber, name and address for the record, sir.
Be a meeting without me, would it be? Hello, Council. So in lieu of the Art and Public Places meeting that we just had, Bobby Farber, forty eight, twenty nine, Saint Arm, his way.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I'd like to ask the council if they could possibly, um, amend ordinance twenty twenty one dash twelve. It would be Article twenty four point two, section seven A, which is display um, in the arts of public places. And I'd like to see if we could do that to now include any art that's included here. However, it's done with the million dollars, seventy five percent of through the developers, that every piece of art from here on include a placard that shall have the name of the artist, describe his concept, what the piece means and how it was constructed, so that our public could look at it, they could understand it, because it seems to be left out and I don't think it's complete without it. So if we could codify that and change it or amend it, that would be great. So that's what I have for you there.
Okay.
Um, Ken, your meeting is next week. Just as an update, I've been able to arrange through FPL to get night runs done starting next week through the city. And they are going to go assess all these streetlights that are out and that's thirty seven of them. They're also going to address the blue and pink lights, twenty nine of those. And hopefully they'll all be done. They're under warranty. They will be replaced by A E L under warranty. Um, so hopefully we get that all done. We get this lit up. I'm going to be all over it as always. And I have that. And lastly, um, hearing everything about the park and everything, I've got a new group starting in Westlake. I will be happy to discuss it with all of you. Should that park ever come, I think I'd like a little small piece of it for something that I think you'll all be pretty accepting of, and we'll talk about that down the line. And that's all I got for today.
Appreciate, appreciate you very much.
Farber.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Farber, Councilman Warner has a question for you.
It sounds like you have some good connections with FPL. And I'd like to see if you can find out when they're going to complete the street lighting on Seminole Prep.
I did ask that question. So I do have somebody very good. There are various departments. Um, department, the department that you're talking about is the new installation department, which I have not worked with, and I'm going to assume that, um, Mr. Ken Castle probably has that answer, so I wouldn't overstep that. Um, I have not delved into that. I do have connections with the timing department, engineering and this part of it. So, um, I was under the assumption that was going to start, I think, last we discussed in maybe another two or three months.
Yeah, I was, my understanding was it was ninety days, but that was ninety days ago.
Uh, I think there was a phase five that they had to kind of finish up.
City manager, do you have any insight?
Yeah, we've been working on the streetlights for seven years. They were supposed to be done seven years ago by FPL. They're still dragging their feet. Between FPL and the county, it has been a nightmare.
Fair, so sadly, it's not something that we can well control, but we can certainly be, uh, or be a, a.
One. Fire on.
Right, correct.
I mean, the conduit is.
Do so much.
Conduit is in the ground. The wire's been pulled. They're waiting to set the poles. And that's an FPL function.
Mr. Farber, I just want to thank you for all your contributions and I'm going to ask that, uh, maybe staff put together some emails or memos in terms of, or including council, what it would look like if, if we wanted to add a plaque with the artist, at least the name and, and if they want to include maybe a Q R code with, you know, because you can only fit so much on a small plaque, but something, something that identifies the artist.
That big, that big on something.
Something that identifies the artist. So that's something that staff can start working on.
We'll take a look at it. Very good idea.
So that, that'll be a staff discussion, but, but thank you for your contributions always.
Thank you.
You're an asset to the city.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
I have no additional comment cards, Mayor.
All right. And before I move forward, any other public comments? No, we're going to have another opportunity at the end as well, so. All right, presentations and proclamations, we have none. Let's move forward with the consent agenda, which is the section of the agenda that consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless one of our council members requests such, in which event we will, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and then considered on a future agenda. If there is nothing that needs to come off the consent, I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconds.
Okay, thank you. Now we have before us M S P twenty twenty five oh two, which the applicant caught a hearing on.
Do you need to vote on that motion?
A motion to approve, yes, we do, the consent. Madam Clerk, can we roll call that, please?
Yes, can I have the motion again, please?
I made it.
Motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call. Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
So that's getting ahead of myself here. Uh, M S P twenty twenty five oh two, this is quasi judicial and the applicant, uh, on behalf of Palm Beach West Associates is requesting approval of master sign plan for Sing, for Silver Lake Residential Development. City attorney, can you swear in any witnesses?
Sir, all, all those individuals who testified during the course of this hearing, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or tell the whole truth and others about the truth? Please proceed.
Counsel, let's go ahead and disclose ex parte. I'll start. I met with, uh, the applicant and the planner to discuss this very item.
Same. Same here.
Same here.
Same.
All right, we all met in person. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, Santiago Cliffs, planning for the city of Westlake. Before you, M S P twenty twenty five zero two, Silver Lake's residential development master sign plan. The applicant is requesting a master sign plan approval for the residential development known as Silver Lake, located south of Persimmon Boulevard, east of Parcel T Estates. This subject application includes two waivers. The subject site has a future land use of Residential One and Residential Two. The zoning is R one, R two. A little background, on May twenty second, twenty twenty five, the master site plan was approved on June third, twenty twenty five, the plat for the phase one was approved. The subject site proposes for phase one is two hundred and ninety four homes for phase two, one hundred and fifty four homes. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval of the master sign plan for Silver Lake's residential community. The master sign plan proposes two entry monument signs, including two waivers. One waiver is to allow two, um, uh, monument signs and the second waiver is to allow a minimum setback of fifteen feet from the nearest property line. Just mentioned, as part of the subject master sign plan, the applicant is requesting the following waivers for the city code section one one three dash eleven permitted signs. The first is to allow two alternative residential pod entry monument signs. The code requires one. The second waiver is to allow a minimum setback of fifteen feet from the nearest property line. The code requires a, a minimum fee of, uh, eighty feet setback. Here's the proposed alternative residential pod entry monument signs. And here's the proposed monument sign. The proposed Silver Lake Monument Sign will incorporate similarities with other existing Westlake residential pod entry monument signs, such as similar design, color palette, similar stucco finishes and decorative teal green blue tatum. Here's a little comparison between all residential pod entry monument signs. In the top left, we have the proposed Silver Lake. In the top right, we have residential pod entry monument sign, the typical. And in the bottom, we have the alternative residential pod entry monument sign. As for the final remarks, based upon facts and findings, planning and zoning engineering department have no objections.
I assume we're going to have a presentation.
Yeah.
Well, do, uh, we want to hold our questions or do we want to ask staff questions now?
I'm wondering.
Okay, let's wait, let's wait because they might get answered, so.
There you go.
Please, if you, uh, will.
Good, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, for the record, Donaldson Hearing here tonight on behalf of, uh, G L Homes and their Westlake entity. We do have the presence of Mr. Kevin Rattery here with us today. Uh, many of you have had the opportunity to meet with Kevin, but he's part of the brains behind so much of what happens, uh, at G L and they're, they're a great, great developer. Uh, so this request, uh, is for a, a master sign plan approval to have an alternative pod entry monument sign. And I think, you know, as a matter of, uh, of history, this will be for the, for the Silver Lake project. You're aware of its location south of, uh, uh, of Persimmon. And, uh, here more specifically, what this is what we saw last month and what you approved and the signs are located at the entrance right on Persimmon and they sit back fifteen feet from the property line, but it's actually, there's an additional fifty feet of rural parkway buffer that's there. So it's, you know, it's actually substantially from setback from the edge of pavement as it currently exists. And so when the, when the Westlake code was developed, the pod entry monument signs, those for the residential and those for the non-residential were actually codified into the code as a physical image. So it was never really established with a whole set of regulatory framework. It was an image because that was what was being, was being, was being done. In fact, today we don't even refer to pods anymore. The mayor, the city attorney requires us to talk about parcels because pot, the concept of pods really isn't even in the, in, in the code anymore. Uh, and then when Crestwood came along, uh, we, uh, we processed a, an amendment to incorporate an alternative and Crestwood's one of theirs up on a hill and it's much larger, much more grander. And that's where we came up with the concept of an alternative pod entry monument sign. And so what we're here before is that the process, the process to, to another alternative pod entry monument sign is not to codify a new design into the code, but rather to do a master sign plan. And that's what we're asking you to do to, uh, today. So when you, when you look at the, the waiver request, the waiver request wasn't from the standard pod entry monument sign that sits ten feet from the, uh, from the property line, but from the alternative, which was much larger up on a hill that, uh, was, uh, you know, something that we designed for, for, uh, for Crestwinds. So what we proposed is something very, very nice, uh, and it incorporates a, uh, a glass tile totem that kind of mimics the totem that we have with the standard traditional pod entry monument signs. Uh, and it also includes a water wall. Uh, and I think those of you had the opportunity to speak with Kevin when he was able to join us. You know, water is something that's, uh, very, very common. It's a feature in all G L homes with something that's important to them. Uh, and it's very, very interesting. Uh, and of course, the sign, the sign is actually in keeping with the size of the standard residential pod entry mine. It's only six feet tall in comparison to the Crestwinds. They, the sign panel there where so where it says Silver Lake, that's only six feet tall. The Crestwood sign is actually twelve feet tall at that particular point. One thing I did do want to mention, uh, is that the, the upper beam increased by twelve inches in height. The overall height of the sign did not, but the upper beam in order, I think we mentioned it to a few of you, that we meant that the weight of the structural weight of that water was such that we had to increase the structural beam by, by twelve inches, but it's probably something that you would never notice, but I did want it was two feet, six inches and now it's three feet, six inches, but the overall thirteen feet, six inches did not increase. And the height of that sign, actually, it's, it's five feet from grade, not six feet. So that did not increase either. So uh, very, very nice element. We think it will be, create some great diversity and certainly you can see the, kind of the quality that, uh, G L wants to put into the community, bringing something forth. You know, I, I understand that the, the cost of just these two features is, you know, well above the million dollar figure. So I mean, these are, you know, something that will be very, very nice and add some diversity and water is always wonderful to, uh, to incorporate. So this was the Crestwood sign, uh, so you can kind of see how it fits. Of course, it's much larger, much taller uh, in, in overall height as well as the, the sign panel itself sits twelve feet from grade, whereas we're at five feet.
What about a setback from the property line?
Setback for Crestwood is eighty feet from the, uh, from the property line and we're fifteen feet. So that's why this, that's why ours is smaller than what that one is. But, you know, we don't want to do exactly the same. Crestwinds is unique. It's a wonderful community and very, very unique. Here's a comparison of the two. You saw this in Oswald's, uh, or Santiago's, uh, uh, presentation as well. This gives you the comparison between the two and, and actually the sign panel that is going to be a very, very similar look as the Crestwood panel. The Crestwood panel actually is a, um, kind of a white, I don't think it's a marble, but it's a simulated marble that will be very similar to what we're using. So we try to take cues from everything that we've seen and integrate it into the plan. And so there's the standard pod entry. That's it. Uh, we, uh, happy to answer any questions and request your support for this request, of course.
Well, if you could just back up two slides, which is side by side. I have a couple of comments and then a couple, uh, just random questions. One, I just want to say, wow, I mean, I think that you really stepped it up in the, uh, sign and the monument sign department, and this would be a great, great addition to the city, you know, with the, the rain curtain, as you call it. Um, just a matter, you know, from my own personal knowledge, I assume it's reclaimed water. It's going to be cycling through there. How does it work?
Well, it, it's recycled, so it's very similar to a swimming pool. So it has a filter, it provides chlorine and so it's, uh, you're, you're recycling, but then there's an auto refill. So if it, you know, if it doesn't fill with rain, it auto refills. So it's got a skimmer to get the leaves out.
Like it's piped into.
It's piped in. Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm, I would, I would, yeah, it's, it's piped in. So if the, the water level goes low, it automatically fills up just like a swimming pool.
You connect it to a water line.
Connect it to a water line. Yes, sir.
My next question is, you know, obviously, I can see the landscaping is a little different. We want to really highlight the rain curtain. Any concern at all about maybe kids messing around in there? It looks like it's pretty easily, you can walk right up to it.
Yeah.
Pennies in the fountain.
It, it will be very, very, I mean, it will be visible. It's in an entry where you've got a lot of visibility that's there. We will have a lot of landscaping around it, more low landscaping in the front, a lot of background landscaping in, in the back. So it will be, the other thing, if you see in any GL home, they're, you know, much like Minto, they're landscape fanatics. And, you know, I think I mentioned to some of you that they have this wonderful farm over there at the Silver Lake, and they're going to be using a lot of that specimen material, you know, throughout the property. So, you know, it, it's, it's managed, you know, we have a guard, guardhouse to be, you know, there's digital security, there's camera security, you know, you know, kids will get kids, will someone do something?
That's one completely random kind of question. Let's back up a few slides where it shows the two. There's gonna be two of these, which is beautiful. I really think it's gonna be a very grand entrance, but where it says the name of the road, that, almost in the beginning, where it says.
Yeah, there you go.
Balsam.
Balsam Fur Lane, yes, sir.
How do you guys come up with the names of these roads?
You know what? Kevin's here, he's gotta earn his money. Kevin, can you explain?
How do you guys figure this stuff out? I've been dying to know. Hi, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
For the record, Kevin Rattery, Vice President, GL Homes, 1600 Sawgrass Corporate Parkway, Suite 150, Sunrise, Florida 33323.
Thank you for being today.
I have been waiting for Rattery Lane for about 30 years at GL Homes and haven't got it. So our marketing department basically creates a theme. And when I say a theme, they come up with a theme of whether it be flowers, or parks, or cities, or, and, and then they start playing off that theme. So you will see, even you can't see anything other than Balsam Fur Lane, the names of this community.
Is that a type of tree?
It's a type of pine tree, I believe.
So we're gonna have a bunch of tree names throughout this.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, the theme of this was street names. Now, once we have that, we then go through a procedural process to get the street names approved, make sure that there's no other street names that are close, that would create a confusing situation for a fire department if they got a call.
Right.
We get those approved, and then we affix them to the plan. So that's the process. Still no Rattery Lane, though, yet. Maybe when I retire.
All right, I'll open it up to my colleagues on the council if we have questions for staff or the applicant. And thank you so much for that, because my curiosity has been killing me.
I have one question. In your, in our agenda package and then in your presentation, one of them has water spouts in front of the name Silver Lake, and one of them does not. So is there gonna be water spouts in front of it?
The spouts in the back, I believe. I'll let Kevin answer that.
Counting jet, is that what they're called?
Excuse me, sir, are you sworn?
Yes.
Yes. You're sworn, okay. I didn't, I didn't stand and swear in, yes.
Thank you.
I swear. The plan right now is to have, we call them bubblers, in the front of the Silver Lake. Part of the design elements that Don was talking about earlier with the structural, we're, we're still designing this thing to make sure that certain situations don't occur. For instance, you don't want the water from the rain curtain bouncing and hitting up against the sign wall, because then you create a
Sure.
a place for water to start intruding into areas. So we're still designing those elements, but right now, the plan is to have, we call them little bubblers in front. And that's really just to add a little additional aesthetic right in front of the sign.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Warner, you recognized? Do you have any questions?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. No, very nice design. Looking forward to the project.
Rest of my colleagues here?
Same. I asked all my questions during the meeting.
No, very nice. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and open public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Which is these beautiful signs. We're here. We'll get you right, we'll get you next, Ms. Torres.
Sorry. Bobby Farber, 4829, saying on his way. Just, I was wondering, with this sign, and you made a great point about kids getting in and all of that, is there the possibility to have some type of pet plexiglass last front of it, so that they kind of can't climb over, yet it's see-through? Because there is a school going in there, they are gonna be a little younger, and I feel like that might be something to kind of stop them from doing.
So I guess the question I would have is GL, GL does a lot of these water feature signs throughout Florida? Is, is kids getting into them an issue anywhere? Is that something that's, it was my question.
I, I, I don't, I believe, I believe they have a very capable way of managing it and monitoring it. They have, every GL community has sometimes a lot more water than this, and
Can they have kids?
Yeah, a lot of them do. Yes, a lot of these communities do. Not all retirement communities, so they do. So that will be something. Putting plexiglass or glass would be, would be, would be challenging, but, you know, if they're
The non-issue is over, sir. And the guardhouses, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Torres, please.
Hi, Alicia Torres, 5847 Whipper Will Circle. I just wondered if we could get some clarification about the 15-foot setback, because an 80-foot and a 15-foot is very big difference. So maybe if you could show us what that means on that plan map with the two.
And it's 15, but there's about 50 of, of buffer in front of it, correct?
If we can go back to the slide there, I'll go back to it.
No, you have it.
Let's go to my presentation there. There we go. This explains it well. So again, you have to understand the context of the 80 feet. The 80 feet was put there because with, when we designed Crestwinds, Coulter wanted it up on a hill in this very, very grand setting in the back, because the whole entrance, the whole entrance is raised way up. And so it was a totally different setting, so we established that setback, because that's what it was. In this, this is much smaller than that, and it actually sits back from the right-of-way line, you know, from where the, the, the physical 80-foot road right-of-way. It actually sits back 65 feet from that location, so.
From the curb line or from the property line?
From, well, from the right-of-way line, which is, which is the backside of the curb. 15 feet from the multimodal, from the multimodal, from the, not from the pathway, it's probably 25 feet from the pathway.
Okay.
Or 30, maybe, maybe a little bit more.
Thank you.
You didn't say anything about lighting? Or did I miss it?
No, no, the, 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 the entire feature would be illuminated. We'd anticipate that the letters are gonna end up being backlit, but there'll be lighting in the water that, you know, you're not, you're gonna want to see that water really sparkling in the evening hours. That's part of the, part of the character that you'll get. And of course, the landscaping behind it will all be lit up as well.
Pretty nice.
It really will be.
Yeah, this is, this is very exciting. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Go ahead. Make it quick, please, since you're, you're only supposed to get one.
Give it to me. Where, aren't we widening the roadway over there? All right, there's, it's gonna be in with the school that we were gonna widen Persimmon, the possible two lanes.
Depends on traffic volume.
But if that were to happen, this setback wouldn't be the same thing anymore, would it?
A little setback would. He was measuring it from the property line.
Yeah, we're measuring from the property line and from the right-of-way line. So Persimmon, this is an 80-foot right-of-way, and we have a 50-foot, basically, additional buffer on both sides. So it's 180 feet in, in total width. So the road, as it's been constructed, is two lanes and a bike lane. But if you look at the road, the drainage structures are actually set into the grass, so it's designed to very easily add an, add in the.
Very good. Do we have any other comments, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Any other comments on this item from the public? I will close public comment, and I will close the public hearing. And if I don't have any other comments from my colleagues on the council, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve MSP 2025-02.
Okay.
We have a motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call. Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Well done. We have before us MSP 2025-04. The applicant is requesting a master sign plan approval for the project known as Tractor Supply, located in parcel F2 within the Westlake Landings Development. City Attorney, please swear in any witnesses that may provide testimony.
Those individuals could testify. Please stand, raise your right hand. You saw me swear a total of truth, not spread truth. Please proceed.
All right, let's go ahead and disclose any ex parte. I have had none on this item.
None.
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 All right. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes.
Santiago, please.
For the record, Santiago Cliffs, planning for the City of Westlake. Before you MSP 2025-04, Tractor Supply Master Sign Plan. The applicant is requesting a master sign plan approval for the project known as Tractor Supply, located in parcel F2 within the Westlake Landings Development. The application also includes one waiver request. The subject site has a total gross area of 4.5 acres. The future land use is downtown's mixed use, and the zoning is mixed use. And here's the location of parcel F2. A little background, on June 4th, 2024, the City Council approved application SPR 2024-01 for a 4.5 acre sign known as Tractor Supply. The application included a 23,000 square foot main building, a 20,000 square foot fenced outdoor display area, including 1,300 story shed. The application also included a waiver to increase the allowed fence from eight, from six feet to eight feet. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval of the master sign plan in accordance with chapter 113, section 113-8, master sign plan. The subject application proposes two signs, one wall sign in the principal building, and one wall sign in the adjacent structure labeled as Garden Life School Center. The application includes one waiver request to allow cabinet sign on the logo. Just mentioned, as part of the subject master sign plan, the applicant is requesting the following waiver from city code chapter 113-46, other prohibited signs, to allow a cabinet logo sign. For your reference, chapter 113, section 113-3, cabinet sign means the structure usually made out of wood, plastic, metal, or some combination therefore, which contains one or more sign faces. Here are the proposed locations for the wall signs for Tractor Supply. Here's the proposed location at the principal building with the cabinet logo. Here's the proposed wall sign for the adjacent structure, Garden Center. And here is the rendering of both of the signs. Final remarks, based upon the facts and findings, planning and zoning engineering department have no objections.
Thank you. Let me preface this by saying, I'm a big fan of Tractor Supply. I, I just brought my dog Lilo there for a bath a couple of days ago. My kids are buying dynos and little John Deere tractors. It's, I think it's a great addition to the city, as well as the, the Western communities in general. My question is, why are we hearing about this now? It's open for business. It's been CO'd, I'm, I'm assuming. Why are we now in front of the council asking for an amendment to the, the site, to the sign plan, when I think the sign's already up?
I believe they're temporary signs that are up.
That's a temporary sign?
It's a banner.
I, okay. Okay, so again, why wasn't this brought to us months ago? We knew Tractor Supply was gonna be there. Why are we doing this post grand opening?
So it was up to the applicant. The applicant, you felt in the beginning that it would requirement of the master sign plan. However, we did not receive an application, formal application, so we could not process the application. So it was merely just timing from the applicant, that's why it's before you now.
I mean, in general, do we issue COs before we have applications for signs?
The, the sign does not have anything to do.
And again, I love Tractor.
Sign, sign doesn't have anything to do with the CO. Sign is a separate, sign is a separate, signage is a separate application, separate process.
Okay, so I know we have, I know we have, we, because we just passed it, amount of time that temporary signs are allowed to be up, grand opening signs, we, we gave them 60 days for that. Shouldn't these things methodically happen in a certain order to where?
Mr. Mayor, if you, you can ask the applicant to apply at a certain timeframe. You can ask them to reply. If they don't apply, they choose to stall on submitting their applications, there's not a lot the city can do. You can't stop their CO, you can't stop other stuff. They could operate the business without any signage if they chose to do so.
Is that an issue with our code? I mean, so we could truly have a business that's open and not have a single sign?
Yes, you can have businesses with no signs. There's no requirement to have an external sign on your, on your business. You could have a sign on a door.
Is that something that's normal in municipalities?
It's a question of the law and your code.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir. Signage is separate, as the city managers indicate.
Signage is not required either. No, they can go without a sign.
Huh, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe that's something we should visit. Okay, do we have any other questions from my colleagues on the council?
Yeah.
Sure.
Excuse me, to either one of you. They're asking for a waiver to a sign type that's not permitted, is actually prohibited. What is permitted for this particular location?
Is that channel?
Yes, so the, the code prohibits cabinet-type signs. Only channel letters is what the preference is.
Have we approved a cabinet or canister sign before?
No, it shouldn't.
So this would be the first?
It, it's not the sign per se, it's just a logo.
The logo.
Yeah, the sign will have channel letters. Only, this will be just for the logo.
Okay, so have we approved other logo canisters?
Yeah, so 7-Eleven or, I don't have the information in front of me, so I couldn't tell you, but we can, I couldn't tell you for sure.
We'll have to double check, possibly 7-Eleven.
The sign, yes, it has to be backlit.
Wait, wait, the sign meaning Tractor Supply or the logo? Which?
Well, it is, the sign is the logo. Am I wrong?
Right.
I understand the Garden Center separately.
Right, but the words Tractor Supply.
Respectfully, Mayor, let's keep the questions one-to-one here for the record. So I think Councilman Warner has.
All right, okay, so let me try to get this thing clarified.
Please.
The words Tractor Supply on the front of the building.
Correct.
Are channel letters.
Correct.
Are they backlit?
Yes.
Okay, the only thing that's a canister is the TSC in a polygon, which is a canister box-type sign.
Correct.
And that's internally lit?
Yes.
Okay. Then my, I, I already asked, but I, I wanna, I would be, I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent here.
Right.
With approving a sign that's prohibited, that has not been approved in a city.
And, and, and the answer is that the sign is still gonna be a channel letter. It's just, it's only.
I'm not talking about the canister.
Right, that, just a logo. And we have recently passed language regarding the logo. If it's a trademark logo and things like that, it will be allowed regardless of cabinet or channel, or channel letters. We just want to be, cover all the bases regarding this specific logo. Sometimes it, it appears like that, but the letters are, you know, actually channels, channels, it's not just a cabinet. There are other instances where that they provide the logo like that. So it's not a specific cabinet, so the letters are actually channeled.
Okay, you confused me again with your answer. I, I understand the Tractor Supply letters are channel letters.
Correct.
Backlit.
Yes.
The only thing that's a canister sign is the TSC.
Correct.
And that's in a cabinet, canister, a box-type sign that our code says is not permitted. But you said a moment ago that we amended the code to allow trademarks in a canister sign?
Logos, logos, not signs, logos.
So it could be, it could be similarly affixed to the wall in channel letters, a combination of channel letters?
If it's trademarked and, and it complies with all the requirements of the code, yes.
Okay.
Logos.
All right, well, they have that option.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'll just say, the reason I'm inclined to approve the waiver is because.
Rather you not comment until you have the applicant.
What I'd like, what I'd like to, to comment on is the fact that this is a standalone building. What I'd like, what I'd like to, to comment on is the fact that this is a standalone building versus, um, you know, in a plaza with 10 other logoed signs right next to each other. That needs to have more of a cohesive look. This is a standalone. It's its own building. I guess my only question would be, is this the way that it's done on all tractor supplies? Or is, is there some reason this is unique to Westlake that we're doing it differently?
Yeah. So based on when we review.
No, sir. We got it's follows procedure.
Okay.
So when we reviewed.
The city presentation, then the applicant, then you can open it up for public comment.
Please. Understood. I think that is the applicant though.
Mm-hmm. So we, that's what I was gonna say.
That is the applicant.
I don't know that.
When we reviewed the sign, we mentioned, we mentioned this to the applicant that they had the, the option of, um, you know, pushing the letters out to not make it a cabinet. We, and, and they chose the option to request a waiver.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so that's my comments from staff. Can I hear from the applicant now?
Here, yes, sir.
All right. Applicant, please state your name and address for the record.
Lynn Medlin, 5826 Stanton'sburg Road.
Unpack this for me, please.
It's very easy. So, um, you're, to answer your first question.
I'm sorry, ma'am. What is your status with the applicant?
My apologies. We are the manufacturer, the fabricator, the sign vendor for tractor supply. I am here representing them.
Okay. So you're the agent for the applicant?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, so our typical sign package for tractor supply is not this. It is actually a cabinet. We, that's what we normally put up on all locations. To more adhere to your code though, what we are requesting is the channel letters, um, with the logo. That logo is our trademark branding for tractor supply, and that is why we are requesting the waiver.
If I may, if I'm not mistaken, according to staff, you don't need a waiver for cabinet logo.
If the applicant provides all the requirements for the logo, you know, trademark and all these specifics, then the logo will be allowed. However, we did not receive anything, um, based on that, and it's only the request of the waiver.
Okay. So it is a, it is nationally trademarked logo.
It is.
You just didn't submit all the information to staff for, for it not to necess, for it not to need a waiver.
I am not sure.
I think.
Well, why don't we hold it over and let them submit the information?
Well, I'm sure they wanna get their sign up.
Well, why? They're already open.
We do, we do in fact want the sign. Um, and we actually, the delay was that we were actually originally denied. And then we had to kind of regroup and we were really struggling with whether should, we should go for our standard sign package, which is a full cabinet. We typically would do and on this location, an eight by 24, one solid cabinet. So we weren't sure if we wanted to go that direction or if we wanted to more closely align with your code, which we chose to do.
See this, I mean, this goes back to why are we, why are we doing this after the fact when this should all be figured out?
I have a question of the, of the representative.
Please.
Um, ma'am, the logo are three letters in a polygon. You're a sign manufacturer.
Yes.
Couldn't you put three letters as channel letters and encase, enclose them in a polygon on the back? So that you have full compliance?
We actually can, and I believe that we did present that as a, we did not. As an option. Um, yes, we could do it on a backer panel and have three individual channel letters if that's what.
Why?
You would prefer we do.
Is the sign already made?
No. No.
And you're saying you submitted, you submitted it and our staff denied it?
It was, yes.
The original.
The original. This is not the original.
So it was first admitted as a building for a meth or sign. We rejected it because they require a master signage plan. Uh, it was a requirement at the site plan approval process, uh, approval. Uh, and then we also made the comments of the actual sign that did not, first, it did not comply with their current code. We went back and forth. They submitted the master signage plan. We discussed about the letter being separated from the cabinet, um, and, you know, it came to this request.
And it's staff recommendation that we approve as presentive?
It, it's up to, uh, the code allows.
Be candid.
The, the code allows deviations from, you know, the requirements. It's up to the city council to.
Make the final decision.
You know, make the decision. Uh, we have no objections. Um.
But to the rest of the city, it's all Chan?
Yes. All, all the, uh, the signs that we are consistent approving cha, uh, channel letters.
Okay. But she said they could go back and do a channel. On a backer board.
I, I just.
We could, but what I will tell you, um, in fabrication, I, I realize that you guys call this a, um, ca, a, a cabinet. However, from our manufacturing standpoint, it is no different than the channel letters. We bend it on the same machines. We don't actually build a true cabinet as if we were to put up the standard wall cabinet, because that requires a full substructure. It's really bent and built exactly like the channel letters.
The actual difference, the material?
Uh, just, just the, yeah, what we use for, um, the structure itself. Yes.
Well, is it a plastic face that goes in the canister?
That's correct. It's the same thing as, as the channel letter. It's just in a, in a custom.
But it's a plastic face?
Correct.
Okay. A channel letter is much different than a plastic face.
No, a channel letter has, these channel letters have the same polycarbonate acrylic plastic faces, whichever term you wanna use.
Republics is, that's what they are.
Correct. It has the same exact face as the tractor supply letters. Yes, sir.
Initial, uh, separately.
I'm sorry.
Letter is installed separately.
Well, in this case, we, we have it on a raceway. So there's a raceway that it's attached to, and then that's mounted to the building.
All right.
So it's just what we call it?
Basically. It's a term.
Talking about something very minutia, semantics, technical.
And from our manufacturing standpoint, we're gonna fabricate it the exact same way. We will not fabricate it the way we would fabricate a typical cabinet, if that makes any sense.
A waiver.
No. I mean, we just, well, we, because of our code and the language of.
Right. You may.
Assume we do, but the sign manufacturer is telling us that it's really the.
Channel.
Exact same thing.
It's just, it's just a different contoured structure.
Made of, what's the material?
Made of the metal, the same metal that the channel cans made, the channel letters are made out of, the exact same stock and the exact same faces, the exact same, uh, trip cap, the whole thing, same materials.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Colleagues?
And so, Austin, you, you concur with that? You agree?
In, in our review, we, uh, typically see this as a cabinet sign. So.
Okay.
So that's the reason for the waivers?
The waivers.
Okay. Um, I. I could, hold on. Let's.
Excuse me. Cabinet logo, not sign.
Right, logo.
Logo.
Um, let's open a public hearing. Do I have any comments from the public on this item? Ms. Torres, Madam Clerk, do we have any other comment cards?
We do not, Mayor.
Hi, Alicia Torres, 5847 Whipper Will Circle. Again, um, I just want to get some clarification, clarification about the Garden Center. We were so caught up in the tractor supply. Is the Garden Center also channel lettering? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this item? Nope. I'm gonna close public comment. And I'm gonna close the public hearing. And, uh, let's open it up to the, my colleagues on the council to discuss this. Anybody have an opinion? It seems like we're, we're kind of nitpicking here over words.
Um, I have an opinion.
Sure.
Uh, I would stay with the channel letters for tractor supply. I don't have any issue with that. Uh, I, I do have a problem with approving a waiver because it would set a precedent on the logo sign. And the applicant's, the representative said that they can do that with channel letters. So I see no reason to approve that part of it.
I guess my only question is, I don't see what's not channel. The, the, the manufacturer seemed.
Yeah.
Still think it was channel, but.
Well, that's them, but let us, we need to deal with the code.
Right. Yeah. Um, no, I don't disagree. And.
So respectfully, sir, is that a motion?
Well, no, I think we're still, okay, we're still discussing it amongst ourselves.
Well, I think I agree with Gary on that. If they're able to make those letters and call it whatever they call it, then we should stick with that code, because it doesn't appear to be any cost impact or other impact. Is there? Okay, all right. You didn't say that.
Sorry, ma'am.
Okay. Considerably different cost to tractor supply.
We should have talked about that.
Yes, considerably different cost. And if, just, just to give you some background with that, then it requires.
If you reopen it.
Yeah, I'll reopen the public.
I mean, you've got to recognize her. She doesn't have the right to come forward unless you recognize.
I, I would like to hear what she has to say. So you are recognized. Let's open the public hearing again. And, uh, yeah, like again, just be candid. Tell us what the scoop is.
So, um, in our, in fabrication, obviously, as opposed to, and, and I'm, uh, basically, there's a huge machine that when you create channel letters, it sends the metal through it. We send the program to it. It bends that metal. Okay? So the same machine that's gonna bend the metal for tractor supply, individual letters will bend the same for the, the logo. Okay?
TSC.
Correct.
TSC.
The, the, as you, as you refer, the cabinet, the logo cabinet. Okay? Now, if, so now you take, and you're not doing one individual one now. You're now doing three individuals. Your, uh, LEDs are more, are different. Everything about it is different. So instead of making one, I realize that's bigger, but instead of making one, we're now making three. In addition, we have to custom make some type of backer panel that will also bring it out to the level of the, um, logo and, or of the channel letters and the raceway. So now we've got an additional cabinet essentially that we're building.
Talking about the same thing. It's, we're talking about two completely different things.
Right.
Well, two different ways of manufacturing it.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
With considerable more cost to tractor supply.
Okay. Well, we just heard from another one that's built, spending a million dollars on their signs.
But we're not. That's not their budget. Do respect. All right. Thank you for that.
Kind of concur with, um, colleague here on the council that I don't wanna set a precedent. The only, the only, oh, let's close the public hearing back again so we can discuss amongst ourselves. The only thing I wanna hear from staff is can you please re-clarify? You said there was a change to our code that doesn't require the logo to be channel, but it just, because it's a national trademark and that wasn't presented?
That's correct. So reading from the code, logos or any federal registered trademark may be permitted as part of a sign as follows. If design as an integral part of the advertising copy, if consistent with an approved color scheme or master sign plan and is displayed as federally registered.
And the issue, so, so technically they qualify for this. They just didn't submit anything?
Yeah, we have no.
What would they need to submit to?
Uh, need proof that it's, uh, it's a trademarked.
You're not actually asking for anything outside of our code. They just didn't go through the procedure properly. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to offer two avenues. They can either not be granted a waiver today and have to do a channel sign, or they can submit what they need to submit properly so that we don't have to grant a waiver.
Fine. I agree with that.
Uh, and I think both, both of those options are fair and equitable to the applicant.
Yeah. I'll make that motion, Mayor.
What is that motion?
The motion would be to approve the proposed sign plan, but not the waiver and grant the applicant the opportunity to do the trademark sign, if that's what it is, as either channel letters or in a canister design, if they satisfy the code requirements with that.
Second.
Respectfully, that motion doesn't, doesn't need to address all those issues. The application is for a waiver, correct?
Right.
I think what you're do, basically doing is denying the application.
For the waiver or are we, are we approving the?
Then, then they can proceed under the code.
Okay.
So the sign can be approved, but not the waiver?
Give them a chance? Do you, do you wanna table them? You should give them a chance to apply for the.
Well, well, no, I think staff, not just that we can, we can approve the sign.
No, but I'm saying, but the, what I'm saying is we could table the waiver request until next meeting. And then I'll get, that gives them a chance to submit the correct.
They don't need the waiver.
I get it. I understand that. But it gives them the opportunity to submit what they need to submit. And then if approved, we could remove it from the agenda from next month and we don't have to hear it.
Counselor, that's.
If your application is for a waiver, you have to act on that, correct?
The, the application is for a master sign plan, including a waiver, so yes.
The sign, but not the waiver.
Are they gonna do it all channel? Are they gonna do it, the trademark?
All right. Um, my motion will be to approve the master sign plan and deny the request for waiver.
But then you need to pull back the other.
No, all they have to do is bring any other.
Okay. Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Council McGlyson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard. Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So you have all the options available?
Yeah. Not, not till public comment, unfortunately. Sorry.
Is that a question?
Uh, I, we will, we will move in groove, I promise you here. Let's see where we're at now. We just have a big agenda. We wanna get through it. Uh, we have before us the second reading of ordinance 2025-04, chapter 119, zoning text amendment, AC screening.
Thank you for the records, Neil Leon, planning for the city of Westlake, before you, second reading for ordinance number 2025-04. Uh, this is chapter, uh, 119. There has been, this ordinance, first reading, was approved by the LPA and council on first reading on June 3, 2025. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance number 2025-04. There has been no changes from the first reading.
City attorney, read by title?
Yes, sir. Ordinance by title only, in ordinance, city council, city of Westlake, Florida, many, chapter 119, city of Westlake, Florida, code of ordinance is titled zoning by specifically amending section 11931-subparagraph C7, entitled setback exceptions for residential R1 and residential R2 districts under article two entitled zoning districts and standards to provide for clarification relative to screening exceptions for single-family residential lots, provided for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Staff comments or presentation? This is second reading, so we've.
No comments.
We've gone through this.
Comments, approval.
Let's open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards?
We have no public comment cards.
Okay. Uh, there's no discussion on this item from the public. I'll close the public hearing and open council discussion. Do you have any comments from council on the second reading of this item?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-05.
Becken.
Zero four. Zero four. Sorry, four.
We have a motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman McGlyson. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman McGlyson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us second reading of 2025-05, chapter 113, zoning text amendment, permitted temporary signs. City attorney, please read by title.
Ordinance by title only, in ordinance, city council, city of Westlake, Florida, many, chapter 113, city of Westlake, Florida, code of ordinance is titled signs by specifically amending section 113-66, table 113-66, entitled permitted temporary signs under article three, entitled temporary signs provided for additional installation and removal dates for non-residential sale, rental or lease or a building or portion of building, provided for codification, conflicts, provided for severability, and provided for an effective date.
Do we have any, uh, staff comments on the second reading of this item?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you for the records, Neil Leon, planning for the city of Westlake. Uh, so this is the second reading for ordinance 2025-05. We made, uh, a change based on the recommendation from the first reading. Uh, right now, the, for the permitted temporary signs, we made the change to the final removal date language and not reads until 100% of the building is sold, rented, or leased within 10 days of the sale. Rental or lease of the building portion, or the building or portion of the building. As a recommendation from first reading, and there has been no other changes. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comments on this item, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Torres has a public comment.
Hi, Alicia Torres, five eight four seven, Whipper World Circle. Um, so I'm just curious exactly what this final removal date section means. Because I'm wondering how T S C got so far into the process without having a final signage plan agreed upon by the city. My understanding is that ten days, it says, you know, one hundred percent of the building has been sold, leased, rented. They have ten days of temporary signage.
So if I may, uh, what this, with this ordinance is, the intent on this ordinance is for you to be able to put up uh, space available. If it's a big, huge building, you know, uh, lots available, parcels available for rent while you start construction.
This is for like multi-unit buildings. Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and close. If there's no more public comment on this item, I'm going to go ahead and close. And that's good for council discussion. Do we have any council discussion on this item?
Okay.
If not, I'd love to entertain a motion.
If you would, Ms. Mayor, members of. Motion to amend the ordinance as recommended by staff.
Recommended by staff.
I'll move, um, approve amending. I'll, I'll move approval of ordinance two, twenty twenty five dash zero five as amended, presented tonight. Is that good enough?
Well, you need to amend it.
As amended by staff.
Yes, sir.
I'll move approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five.
Sid, we, I'm sorry to interrupt. So we need two motions, one to amend and one to approve as amended.
You need to amend it, then you approve the amended ordinance.
Okay.
Got it.
Shall I do it?
Please. End it. Full send.
Um, I'll move approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five, amending that ordinance as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I'll approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Gleason. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Great work. We have before us first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five zero six, chapters one oh one, one seventeen, and one nineteen, which is a zoning text amendment for cottage homes. City Attorney, please read by title.
Yes, sir. Ordinance by title only in ordinance, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, amending chapter one nineteen zoning, city's code of ordinances, specifically amending section one nineteen dash thirty one residential districts under article two, zoning districts and standards to establish development standards for cottage homes within the R one and R two zoning districts and to allow reduced side setbacks for certain single-family attached units. Amending chapter one oh one general administrative provisions under article one, section one oh one dash one definitions and acronyms to include definitions related to cottage home, amending chapter one seventeen subdivision site development standards under article seven, section one seventeen dash one seventy six minimum standards access and circulation systems to establish standards and common driveway access, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Thank you. For the benefit of the public who weren't here for the LPA meeting, I'm going to ask staff and the applicant to redo their presentations.
Thank you, Mayor, for the record, Neil Leon, planning for the city of Westlake. Uh, before your ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero six, this is first reading. This is a privately initiated text amendment. The Land Planning Agency approved this first reading of this ordinance. Uh, the proposal is to make changes to chapter one oh one. Uh, these are the definitions. We are adding definitions to cottage home, which means a type of single-family attached dwelling in a two lot, Z lot configuration with common driveway and parking area in the rear from a public or private access easement alley. Unless separate standards for cottage homes are specified, standards for development of single-family attached dwellings shall apply to cottage homes. The applicant is also making recommendations to amend chapter one seventeen. This is for the subdivision and site development standards uh, for access and circulation systems. Uh, the language reads a common driveway and parking area may be utilized for legal access to a group of not more than eight abutting cottage homes. That is four sets of cottage homes in two lot configuration sharing a single common driveway and parking area. The common driveway and parking area must be accessible from a residential access road or, or other approved right-of-way and should be delineated and dedicated or reserved on the applicable plat for purposes of perpetual access, access to this lots served. The purpose of this subsection, lots separated only by common driveway and parking area shall be considered abutting. Table one nineteen dash zero one dash three, this is, these are the R one district residential standards. It's also being proposed to be amended. Uh, it incorporates the cottage homes land development regulations. And as well as in the R two zoning district, uh, it also introduces the new level, new development regulations for this new product. Again, these are the conceptual plans for, uh, shown for cottage and villas. These are just conceptuals. And that concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Mr. Applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Donaldson hearing here tonight on behalf of Minto P B L H L L C. And with me is Ms. Catherine Roswell with the firm of Lewis, Long, Men &amp; Walker. Um, as, as Noel pointed out, and I'll try to, uh, you know, not repeat everything that he said, just in the interest. I, I know you have a long meeting. But the purpose of this amendment is to facilitate, uh, Minto's desire to introduce some additional product diversity into the community. Uh, and one of those, they're both technically attached single-family homes. So the terraces are attached single-family, the crossings are attached single-family. And what we're looking at introducing is what we call a paired villa, which would be two units attached, but still attached single-family. And then a cottage home, which is also two units attached and attached single-family. Uh, but we're creating a new definition because it's access from a private access easement as opposed to an alleyway like we have in the, in the terraces. And so let me walk you through that. There are three changes to the code, as Osnell had pointed out, three different sections. The one is the definition for the cottage homes. The second is for the minimum standards, providing for the access easements, providing uh, access to the eight individual, uh, units. Uh, and then the last is a modification to the R one and R two property development regulations table. Uh, and so, uh, single-family attached unit is, is a duplex, is also designed in this particular case in a Z lot configuration, and that's a form or a pattern of architectural design intended to create creativity that kind of came out of California many, many years ago and came to the East Coast and does provide greater curb appeal, uh, to the overall community. Uh, this is a graphic of, of an attached, uh, single or attached villa, uh, paired villa home. Uh, and again, you can see the Z lot down in the middle, and so it really enables the better organization of bedrooms, more light into the bedrooms, provides the architects more, uh, creativity, but it also creates a better streetscape on the front street. So we have one side entrance, uh, a villa, and the other is a front entrance villa. And so most recently, uh, Minto has built the paired villa in the town park community up in Tradition. Uh, and very, very successful. Uh, it's a beautiful product and very, it's a single-story product. Uh, and very much so desirable when the marketplace ranges in the eighteen fifty to two thousand square foot range. So it's, uh, smaller than a single-family home, bigger than a townhome, and bigger than the cottage homes that we're, we'll be showing you in a moment. Uh, there's some photographs of, uh, of some similar product. So you can see here the, uh, the, the front entrance with the kind of the octagonal, uh, bay window and the tower entrance. And there's also a side entrance. And here's some other views. Uh, all product, of course, will be designed so that it's Westlake-centric. So some of these image have some Westlake feel with the outriggers and some of the metal roof trim pieces and other things. But, uh, Minto, of course, is very thoughtful and everything is inspired. Uh, and, uh, given a great deal of, uh, consideration. And here's this another review. So it creates a better streetscape than just looking at just garages sometimes that you get with the townhouse and attached single-family product. Uh, the cottage home is, uh, is different. Now, this is a, a product that Minto had introduced into their premier community in Naples, referred to as the Isles of Collier Preserve. Uh, and it's attached, single-family, a product consisting of two units. Two units are organized into groupings of four two-unit buildings or eight units that are served by a common driveway or access easement. So in the crossings, we had, we had an alley access tract. And here it's an easement and, and instead, that's because these are all pavers. Uh, there's also, uh, what the benefit of this product is, is that it's, uh, uh, all the garages are shielded from the street. So you're just not seeing it's pedestrian oriented. You've got eyes on the street. The front doors are on the street. The porches are on the street. Uh, and so the units are set up to either engage a street, uh, engage a pedestrian muse, and the pedestrian muses were incorporated into the uh, terraces, uh, community, uh, or onto a green or a park, as they would, uh, they would say. Uh, and this is how the, the cottage product, product comes together. Uh, so we do these in, in groupings of eight, so four two-unit buildings in groupings of eight that are clustered into groups of, uh, uh, of four groupings of eight, thirty-two units. Uh, and then they're organized around streets and greens. So very, very nice. Every unit has a two-car garage. Uh, every unit has, uh, has one, uh, parking space, guest parking space. The guest parking, parking spaces are not assigned. They're open, so anybody can park there. Uh, but there's one per unit is basically the way that it's designed. And then we'll provide an additional quarter space per unit on on-street parallel parking as we've done in, in the terraces. So very, very, uh, nice product. Let me show you some of the elevations. Uh, so these are, uh, elevations that, uh, have been utilized over at the Isles of Collier Preserve. And so very nice, so that you can see the front door is oriented to the street. Uh, uh, they also have porches. Uh, porches can be screened or unscreened. Uh, and the porches are typically either on a muse or an area where you've got pedestrians walking by. Here's another example uh, here with a, with a front porch, uh, type of a design, with a front door watching. So the, the, the units live forward, not backwards. So you have eyes on the street, which make it, uh, so, so nice. Size ranges are in the thirteen fifty up to about nineteen hundred square feet, uh, in total size. And the typical buyer profile, as we've seen in, in the Isles of Collier Preserve, uh, are generally a retired couple, possibly downsizing, uh, wanting less space. Uh, the units are, uh, two and three-bedroom, a two-bedroom with it, with a den, with a great room concept. You know, vaulted ceilings. They are really, really cute and very, very nice, uh, uh, very, very livable. Uh, a widower or a single, single person might live there, a single mom, and it really provides a great alternative. Uh, and then also in this particular product type of both this and the paired villa, uh, Minto takes care of a hundred percent of the landscaping. So it's, they take care of everything. So you know, you literally, if you were retired and you were traveling a lot and you just wanted to turn the key, you could turn the key and, and just, uh, and just leave. It also creates a great social environment. So, uh, what we found is that everybody in one of these eight-unit organizational uh, structures that we've set up, they know everybody, they care for each other. You know, you can see, you know, you know, people walking on the street. You say hi to them. Uh, and so that's something that really creates a great sense of community. So as opposed to often, you know, in our single-family homes, we park a dry car, we go in the garage and we go straight inside. Our porches are in the backyard looking at the lake and we don't see anybody. So that's kind of some of the planning principles that, uh, that go into this. Just some other views. Again, different porches, different styles. There's, there's eight different kind of buildings in different styles that all get organized into these different units based on sales and marketing and, you know, what's the most popular, popular unit. So the, uh, what we're, what we're doing is we're amending the land development regulations for typically the, uh, the, uh, the property development regulations for the R one and R two district. Uh, and specifically as it relates to the cottage home, it's for lot coverage. So lot coverage is everything underneath the roof, including underneath the porch. So if it has an overhang that's greater than thirty inches, that's lot coverage. If it's less than thirty inches, it's not. Or a porch, that's all considered lot coverage. And so when we put these together in clusters of eight, depending on which area that that, the units land, what we find is that we have two, two conditions that typically result in lot coverage greater than the sixty percent allowed by the existing code. Uh, but if you look at them on average, as, as on the screen, is actually, the average is actually less than that. And then the same thing with lot coverage. And as we mentioned during the LPA meeting, when, when Catherine and I, you know, worked in developing the code, we originally had intended that the lot coverage applied to a parcel, a total parcel of land. In other words, the totality of a site plan. And so, uh, however, the definition of parcel, as it ultimately got defined within the code, could also relate to any polygon, any defined polygon. So, you know, even though the code talked about what's required for a lot, when it came for a parcel, one could come to the conclusion that parcel was also a lot. So we clarified that. We're changing the lot coverage to be twenty percent. Uh, and then we're creating a more stringent requirement, so a higher standard, a greater requirement that the total green space or the total pervious area, not green space, pervious area with inside a, a parcel defined as a, a site plan or master site plan. So these are defined terms within the code would be not less than twenty-five percent. So just to give an illustration, uh, the terraces, now the terraces is in the mixed-use district, but if it were in another district, uh, if, uh, terraces phase three was twenty-two acres in size, uh, and so, uh, and it had fifteen acres of lot area, defined lot area, platted lot area. Uh, and so if you were to look at twenty-five percent of those fifteen acres, it's three point three acres. Or, uh, but if you look at twenty-five, uh, twenty-five percent of the total defined area of the site plan or master site plan, uh, which would have been a little over fifteen and a half acres, it'd be five point five acres. So actually, it's one point seven times, uh, greater, right? It's seven ti, you know, seven, you know, seven times, point seven times greater than, uh, what you would otherwise have. So it's a more stringent requirement that's incorporated into the code. So that's, that's what we're doing. Uh, again, just real quickly through the technical requirements that are physically in the code for the benefit of the audience. We're creating a new definition, uh, for a cottage home. So it's still a type of single-family attached unit. So the, the lot size in terms of the width is the same, you know, the same regulations. The lot depth is still the same regulation. The lot area is still the same regulation. The only two elements that ultimately change are the lot coverage, which on average, uh, and then we've clarified that the uh, pervious area is based on an overall area and then established a side yard setback for this being different than like an eight-unit consolidated attached, uh, unit, which would be more like a multifamily unit. Uh, and then we've defined the minimum standard, and this is kind of in the subdivision section of the code uh, that enables an access easement to serve the same as an access tract. Uh, and again, from a legal perspective, they do. Uh, and then lastly, the two tables that change, as Osnell pointed out, uh, the table for the R one district, we add the, the cottage home as a line item to find the sixty-five percent. Uh, and then the, uh, minimum twenty percent pervious area on the lot. And then a note saying that the, that the minimum area of the tract, which is a greater standard, is twenty-five percent. Uh, and then in the R two district, we add that same, uh, language on into the code and define the minimum side yard setback for attached, single-family homes in R two as being five feet. So those are our, our modifications to the code, and, uh, we're really excited about this. Uh, it did come up in the LPA meeting, where might this product be built? You know, there, there's a few undeveloped parcels on the east side, east of, uh, Seminole Pratt. Uh, but the most likely would be, uh, what we refer to as parcel E, which is the, uh, just, uh, just to the immediate west of, uh, of Hammocks, right? Go extending out to, uh, uh, Seminole Pratt, Whitney, as well as the opportunities on the west side. So very, very excited. We thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any. So very, very excited. We thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Don. So, I mean, so the public knows, we just got this identical presentation at the LPA meeting. So it's, it's a little hard to repeat the the original enthusiasm that we all had because we've heard the exact presentation just a little over an hour ago. But, you know, I'll, I'll repeat for the benefit of the public, I'll repeat a couple of my notes. As Mr. Herring touched on, we don't know specifically where it would go. This would allow it to go anywhere, but, you know, likely it's going to be on the west side, but based on, I've said, based on what you just said. Square footage is going to be between thirteen fifty and nineteen hundred square feet per unit, all one story, which I think is very important to mention. And again, I'm, I'm excited to have a a new product here in the city. And one other thing that I had Don clarify is this is not at all intended to be a rental community whatsoever. This is, this is not that.
It's homeownership.
Yeah, ownership. And do we have other comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Two questions for Mr. Herring. Number one, the first one, we we addressed basically at the earlier meeting. I just want to know, when was it that you made your application for this amendment?
When did I make the application for it?
Over a month ago.
Yeah, before I went on vacation, before I went to Italy, so probably sometime in very late April, we made this application.
Okay. And also, when we met to go over this information one on one, we had a conversation about the trash receptacle storage and how the pickup would be handled. Can you just for the rest?
I sure will. So the garages are sized so they can accommodate the the trash receptacles that Waste Management provides for us here in Westlake. And then what we, what we will, what the way that the design is, is that there would be a location on the street with a widened concrete curb at the end of each of the driveways, not in the driveways, but along the street, sized to accommodate the the garbage, the garbage cans, because they come back and it's all automated. And so basically, if you look at the, right now, along the edge of your street, there's a two foot valley gutter. And so what we, what we would do, and you could go on Google and look at the Isles of Collier Preserve, if you wanted to see it in more detail. What we do is we, we make that about thirty six inches so that the can can sit right there on the concrete portion without going out onto the asphalt. The Waste Management can come by, lift one, four on each side, and they're, and they're done. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments from counsel?
No.
All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There were no public comment cards, Mayor.
All right, let's close the public hearing. And if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty five dash zero six.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have before us Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, proposed millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty six. City Attorney, please read by title only for the record.
Respectfully, sir, I'd ask you to consider the preliminary millage rate prior to considering the resolution.
Okay, let's go ahead and consider it. Let's, City Manager, can you provide an update?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we discussed in our budget workshop on the twenty fourth, we're proposing a four point seven zero mills, which is the same as the millage rate this year, to be held for next year at this point in time. As we progress in the budget hearing process, we could, if necessary, lower it some, but we could not go higher. So it is recommended to keep it at the same rate as it was on this current budget.
And at the budget workshop, you know, we asked you to bring back some information that.
Yes, we're, we're, we're still working at that, and we can, if necessary, have an additional update workshop prior to the public hearing on September second.
But what we're doing right now is we're just setting a ceiling. There's still room for it to go down.
Setting the high bar at this point in time, but based upon conversations of loss of revenue, other things, things that are going around with business tax, questions, revenues. At this point in time, it would not be prudent for us to do anything lower than what we're doing now. And we'll have to look at what the impacts and effects are based upon what you wanted on spending and other issues.
We, we understand your position, Assistant Manager.
I gotta protect you.
Stand out. Any other counsel comments or discussion on this item?
No.
No.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'm approval of Resolution number twenty twenty five dash fifteen, setting the high watermark for the millage rate at four point seven.
Second.
Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for the city's general operating fund for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty five, and ending September twentieth, twenty twenty six, providing for conflicts, severability, and effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard. Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us Resolution twenty twenty five dash one six, levying the annual special assessment for residential solid waste services for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty six. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, sir, a resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, relating to the provision of residential solid waste services in the City of Westlake, Florida, providing for purpose and definitions, providing for legislative determinations, establishing the estimated rate for the residential solid waste services special assessment for the fiscal year, beginning October one, twenty twenty five, directing the preparation of a residential solid waste services special assessment role, authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing for an effective date.
Now, City Manager or City Attorney, do we have an update? Or do you want to speak on this item?
The proposed rate for solid waste collection would remain the same as it is this current year.
And how does that affect this request for proposal that's going out?
At the current time, it has no impact on it. We'll see if they come in lower. We'll know later.
So we'll know, at very least, we know it won't be higher.
Correct.
Okay, do we have any other comments from the council?
Do you have questions?
Of course.
The total amount is five hundred twenty six thousand one hundred and sixty eight for the entire obligation. That works out to three hundred and twenty four dollars per unit. And when you do that calculation, that equates to sixteen hundred and twenty three units. I thought we were up there around three thousand.
We, we take a very conservative approach on the units and the amounts to make sure that we're covered. But also, the three twenty four, there are other elements of the revenue that goes into that. I'm sorry, I'm off track here. Stephen, would you like to address this for me? We can't, how we arrived at the number of the units?
My bad. For the state, name and address for the back of the side. It's, I, we know who you are, but. How do you assess this?
I'm Steve Fowler with Infomark. I got the number from, from you, Ken, so.
Well, I divided the five hundred twenty six thousand by three hundred and twenty four, which is the total amount per residential unit per year. And came up with the sixteen twenty three. I mean, the, the number sounds fine to me. I was just curious why the difference between sixteen hundred and the three thousand.
I'd like to know as well, and I also want to clarify that when it comes to solid waste. I want to clarify that when it comes to solid waste, it's a complete passover. The City of Westlake doesn't profit on the solid waste services. What we get charged, we pass directly on to the consumer. We don't, unlike a lot of municipalities out there, we don't make a single dollar on solid waste. And we're also going to the street with the contract to hopefully even lower that further. And we're exploring potential franchising opportunities to maybe even reduce it further. That's part of this request for quote that's going out. But I am curious as to how the three twenty five times should be now thirty two hundred homes.
It's, it's not a total of thirty two hundred under this one because you have, as the developers close them, they prepay for the next year, so those won't actually hit on your assessments till the following year. So that's where we have to play with the numbers back and forth to come down to a number that, yes, it's three twenty four, but some of them are already paying the three twenty four prior to your closing, so that you're not being billed after you close.
It's certainly not twice as many.
I would say if we use.
Simple math says it can't be twice as many. The size of the city did not double in a single year.
I would, I would propose that we change the amount generated to eight twenty six, two hundred.
I'm sorry, explain that?
That's based on twenty five hundred homes.
And that's good, that's our conservative estimate to give this question?
Yes.
Does that lower the amount, the assessment amount?
No, because the overall, overall, what we have to pay is based upon the three twenty four. We backed, backed into it based upon what we're paying, based upon the number of units, and came up with the three twenty four.
So just the language in the in the resolution is wrong?
The, the number in the resolution is wrong. Should be eight twenty six.
And it's still based on twenty seven dollars per month per unit?
I don't remember the exactly, yes, roughly.
Is there any logistical or procedural reason that we shouldn't table this until it can come back with the proper information?
Yes, sir. Yes, we've got a time, strict time, so you can amend the resolution. This is to start the process. It's very important you pass.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. That's what I was getting at. All right, so obviously, we have some house, let's call it housekeeping to do.
Yes.
Between now and we can amend this later, but according to our City Attorney, we need this done legally.
So the number that we want to insert in the resolution?
Is the, is the three twenty four per unit.
What page is that?
It's page one twenty three of our, it's page sixteen of the
Resolution.
Resolution.
Now, can this get amended based on what the RFP comes back at and what we decide to do? Or, or that would be for the next?
Yeah, the RFP is going to come out much later.
Yeah. Okay. All right, understood. So we can amend this when we need to, but we need to start this process now because of.
So the amendment would be to Appendix C. In what line?
Would be seven, line seventeen at this point in time.
So make it eight twenty six? I don't see.
Eighteen.
Line eighteen. Is that what we're saying, eight twenty six, two hundred?
Yes. And residential unit, per, per unit is still the three twenty four.
Okay.
If you would have a, Mayor entertain a motion to amend Appendix C.
I would entertain that motion to amend Appendix C, if anybody will be so kind to make it.
I'll make a motion to append Appendix C, line eighteen to eight twenty six, two hundred.
Two hundred, right.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gleason. Excuse me, and seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard. Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
What would have been the problem if we left the number the same? Without the change? Would that have caused any issues? You want to be?
Just for being a less accurate number.
Would just, it would just be less accurate.
It's not accurate as it is, it would just be less accurate.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The bottom, the bottom line is the per unit fee is still three twenty four. We just have to come to the number that it should generate. And you, you probably could correct it a later date. This is really to set the hearing. Public notice that you will have the hearing.
And that's procedural, legal.
Yes, sir.
Necessity.
Correct.
We have before us, moving on to new.
Excuse me, sir, if you would adopt the resolution.
Correct. I need, now that we've amended it, now I need to entertain a motion to adopt.
I move approval of Resolution number.
As amended.
Yep, right. Number twenty twenty five dash sixteen, as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilman Gleason. Roll call, Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have before us an education advisory board initiative to approve fundraising flyers. There is a correction to the agenda to be noted. There is no letter to be executed for this item. Vice Mayor Langowski, would you please provide an update to the board as the board liaison?
Yes, a couple of months ago, Dr. Kaplan made a presentation to the council. This is just, this was resupplied to the council members. It's a letter to go out to local restaurants within city bounds of the city of Westlake. This is a, like a night out, say, if it's Chipotle. Ten percent proceeds go to such and such school. The money does not come to the city. That company would give a check. Once they tally their figures, they present a check to that particular school. We provided flyers for those three schools. So it would be picked out amongst whether that particular restaurant wants to choose one of those.
Sure.
And it's just a chance for our community to come together and support our local schools.
Great. I, I love the initiative.
By nothing comes to the city and the city doesn't have to worry about budgeting or anything like that. It's just maybe, we're just out there to, you know, pick our schools and leave the banner and.
Yeah, and it gives an opportunity for our community partners to help the schools within our city. Okay, any other council discussion on this item?
Oh, good idea.
Great idea.
Great idea.
I didn't. I was just agreeing with you.
Oh, I didn't.
I was agreeing with you. There's no further discussion. I need a motion.
I move approval of the proposed education advisory committee recommendation for letters to our, to local businesses.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
One thing I'll tag on to that is each of our members of the EAB Committee has an assigned restaurant. They all pick them up themselves who the restaurants are, so that's how it's going to be worked. As a group effort, though. The next item is also from the EAB.
Sorry. We have before us education advisory board initiative authorizing the mayor to execute a letter regarding school zoning boundaries. Vice Mayor Langowski, please.
Okay, we presented this two months ago as well. This is a letter to come from on behalf of the mayor of the city to the school board, allowing our, our middle school to be zoned for our students. So they're not having to travel twenty minutes away. And this is for them to relook at the, you know, master plan of what the school district is doing with our students. Plays in line with, you know, potential new zip code for us in the future. But we would love to have our students attending our schools, not having bus, a bus.
I, I couldn't agree.
With our in modal path, we made sure that was in here for you.
Thank you.
That connects our, our city together.
Any other council comments on this item?
No, this is a very great idea.
Yes.
Great, great initiative, and I love the work that the.
We have to pick a school board tonight, then we all show up.
I agree. I love the work that this advisory committee is, is doing under your leadership. Vice Mayor, thank you. I need a motion.
Move approval of the proposed letter from the mayor to the school board requesting exclusive.
Boundaries.
Requesting schools within Westlake to be for Westlake students.
Zoning boundaries. Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item C. Yeah, I, I will absolutely. I should be done now. Let's. Just wanted to definitely recognize Dr. Kaplan for chairing that committee and all her hard work. It's, a lot of great things are coming out of the Youth Advisory Committee. It's, a lot of great things are coming out of the, the youth advisory committee, um, and there's more coming, so thank you again for everything you do. Uh, we have a new item C, which was, uh, added to the agenda, which is to extend the existing solid waste contract to, for ninety days from now, September?
September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thirtieth of this year. Um, apparently we were operating outside of a contract.
Correct.
And this, again, I'm gonna call this housekeeping.
Yes, sir.
As well, this is some, some more legal housekeeping that needs to get done to keep, to bat all of our ta, our eyes and our tees, but does not preclude the city in any way from doing what it's doing, which is going out for bid for public waste services, and I am told that that, uh, RFQ is going out.
RFP, you'll have, you'll have a copy tomorrow when it's being advertised.
The council will have a copy of it.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, but when, are we gonna see it before it goes out?
It's been through legal and everything. It does have everything that we discussed about commercial, uh, pickup as well as the other current pickup schedules.
Okay.
Also, we have in there, I believe there's a clause, and if it's not, I'll make sure it's covered in the mandatory prebid of, that we could technically divide the city half and half, but not a community. In other words, whatever community it is would be picked up on specific days, but it might be, um, Crestwind.
If the city grows, that may become necessary and stuff.
Correct. It, it, it does become closer to necessary because in order to get enough units in here to make it all happen at one day, when you're talking over three thousand units, uh, it gets very, very tricky, and one glitch and you could run way behind, so allowing them the flexibility to divide it up allows us to get a better service rate.
And, and, you know, I understand there's a time crunch here, and we went through this in the, the strategic visioning, but for the future, contracts of this size will be revised by the council.
Yes.
Prior to them being advertised.
Yes.
Um, we made that, we made that as a priority. Okay, uh, let's open up for public comments. Do we have any public?
No, excuse me, sir, resolution.
Read by title, please.
Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving and authorizing the mayor and vice mayor to execute the First Amendment to franchise agreement for solid waste collection services between the City of Westlake and West Waste Management, Inc. of Florida, providing for conflicts severer building or ineffective data.
Thank you. Public hearing on this item opened up. Do we have any public comment on extending the existing contract till September?
That, that's a housekeeping item, uh, we didn't know we were out of contract.
No? All right, close. Public hearing, close public comment, I need a motion.
A move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen?
I defer to the city clerk.
Whatever the city clerk says. Per the city clerk, uh, as recommended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Vice Mayor Langowski. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to council comments, Councilwoman Leonard.
It's a cool agenda tonight, but happy Fourth of July. That's all I got for you today.
My iPad died.
Yeah.
Um, Councilman Gleason.
Uh, just happy fourth, and, and, Mayor, if I could make a suggestion, maybe we could put it in the slides or something to remind our visitors to silence their cell phones. Sometimes it can get a little disturbing when they start ringing and talking on, in the beginning of the, the meeting.
Sure. I think that's wise.
Good talk.
You guys know who you are? Cell phones on silent, please. Uh, Councilman Werner.
Uh, happy fourth, don't forget the Fourth Fest coming up, and thank the council for their work on the strategic planning workshops. I think it was a very good effort.
Vice Mayor?
Happy Fourth of July and come out to the, uh, best.
I will echo all my colleagues' sentiments, uh, happy Fourth of July, please don't miss Fourth Fest, it's gonna be great, we've got some, uh, new, fresh, exciting things this year that we never had in years past, so I'm excited for that. Um, it's, it's super unfortunate that, uh, the governor vetoed our park appropriation, however, you know, rest assured, it's not, it's not, uh, the funding for that park is not a dead issue, we're, we're pursuing other avenues and, uh, at the direction of the governor himself. Uh, we've got a, a call set up for, uh, the week after the fourth, so that, uh, I'm excited to have a relationship with the governor's office. I mean, we've never had that before, so that's, that's great. Uh, let's go on with staff reports. Mr. City Attorney, what do you got for us?
For me?
Yep. All right, you have the city.
Very quickly, um.
I, I've read, I said city attorney, but I've read city manager.
For want some speeches.
All right, now.
Uh, just, just to update, there was a hearing yesterday on the lawsuit brought by, uh, resident addressing the selection process. The court took it under advisement and has not issued a ruling, I advise you when the court does.
Has not issued a rule?
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you, counselor. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple, couple items, uh, again, Fourth Fest, uh, pray there's no rain between now and then.
Don't even put that in.
It's all good. Um, the update on the happy program. From January first to June thirtieth, we've made twenty-two awards to the tune of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I executed today seven more, uh, in the neighborhood of a total of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars in awards, so the awards are coming in, uh, some on the single family, most of them in the townhomes. Uh, we do have a number of, uh, the heroes as well as others, some are one, one hero to a family, some are two, so it, it, the modifications that we made to the program are getting more of the dollars out there, also with the product type that we have is getting more dollars out there to help people.
Fantastic.
Um, the other thing is, um, you have before you a map, I know some people have heard of it, some may not have, but, uh, CSX is going to be rebuilding the railroad crossing on North Lake and Seven Ten. They will be shutting down North Lake for eight days for no traffic whatsoever. Uh, right now, that is scheduled for around July twenty-fifth, but that date is, I wouldn't hold anybody to it, but right now that's the latest hard date that we have, but it may change in the next few days, so there will be, everybody that lives north of Westlake will probably be coming down Seminole Pratt, uh, PBSO, DOT, fire, everybody's been on to much calls, there's a total of plans set up with a bunch of signs, they will be having pick people, monitoring different locations, working with the lights, working for traffic, but for eight days, uh, if you really don't have to go out and go someplace, you can work from home, or you might wanna take a vacation during that timeframe, um, but yeah, traffic rush hour, morning and afternoon is gonna be a mess for about eight to ten days. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Kaplan?
Always, always a pleasure to see you all. Uh, crime trends, fantastic, we're going in the right direction as usual, deputies doing a fantastic job, I can't give the credit all to them, you guys are really doing, uh, you guys are really doing your part, I'm very proud of you, all right? Uh, been around the county policing for thirty-four years and different city councils and different places and different, uh, community leaders, uh, some are more hands-on and some are more hands-off, I have to admit, you guys are somewhere in the middle, which is nice, which is really nice, we know we can tap in if we need you, and you guys can do the same with us. Uh, traffic is, is looking good, we're, we're only up about two percent, year-to-date for crashes, but that's a good thing, knock on wood, Seminole Pratt seems to be, uh, the hotspot area as we predicted. Um, you guys, you really hit it all, all right? Thank you very much, please, on the CSX project, um, please, I'm just, just keep pushing it out, I implore everybody, just patience, we can get through this. PBSO, we're good at this, trust me, we have plans on plans on plans, and they're gonna change, that's why I'm not gonna get into the, to the particulars with you now, July third is that date, that hard date from CSX, we should know exactly when. Now, we did find out that they're gonna be working twenty-four seven, so which is a good thing, all right? I'm hoping they're gonna, uh, underpro, underpromise and overdeliver for us. You guys are all set for your Fourth of July event, I've given you a couple more deputies on me, just to make sure, if they're not needed, they know they can leave, but I'd rather have a little more than not enough, all right? I appreciate all the support, good to see you, and, uh, could you put me up a little bit closer to the beginning next meeting? You know, I know what kinda car you drive, sir.
I know, but I, I, I gotta stay here, so you get to stay too.
Someone's gonna carry me out. All right, you guys, questions?
I have a question for you. Sam, um, the house watch program, I see the Village Wellington has that, where if you're at, if you're on vacation, you have to have a minimum of three days, but a deputy would stop by at home just to check, make sure everything's okay. Wasn't sure if that's something available to us in Westlake.
You know, wh, the Village of Wellington is not richer than we are. And they have a whole lot more deputies. Now, I will make you a promise, number one, I'll look into it.
Okay.
Number two, as you guys continue building the staff here to protect this city, which I will tell you is a very safe city, I have to just make sure I preface it that, but as staff grows and we have the staffing levels here, we can incorporate stuff like that in, in, in the future, right?
I just happened to see, uh, Vice Mayor, I was like, wow.
No, listen, I, I started my career in a small town called Palm Springs, Florida, and, uh, I used to pick up the Vice Mayor and bring him to the chambers, it was pretty neat, you know, very small town, uh, but we used to do the home checks all the time. I think it adds value, the, the community gets to know the deputies a little bit more and, but we don't have the staffing for that just yet. What else we got? That's it? No more, nothing hard? Counselor?
No, sir.
All right, God bless you guys, I'll see you later.
Thank you for everything you do. You don't need to pick me up, we're good.
Gotcha.
Thank you so much.
If you guys need me, phone me, I'll get out ahead.
Thanks for taking my calls. Um, let's open up for public comment.
Mayor, I have no public comment cards.
Ms. Torres, and then we'll grab Ms. Bev.
Um, Alicia Torres, five eight four seven, Whipper Will Circle. I just have like twelve things here that I wanted to point out, I'm just kidding. I know your iPads are dying, so I summed it down to three. Um, the first is, I am also, not to belabor the point, but very disappointed about that line item veto for the park funding, um, and I'm just wondering, I was, I was driving by today and there is no grass, it's like a dirt patch with tumbleweeds, so I thought we were supposed to have like some grass a, at this point, so I'm just kinda curious what the update is there, or are things just not moving at all now that the money has been?
No, we're not, we're not completely done with.
Well, Sid's, Sid's contractor, we've been having some iss, Sid has been having some issues with, um, applying seed and cost factors, so they're still ironing that out, they were supposed to get it started, uh, last week, but they did not, um, but that, the next is to be able to seed the entire parcel that will be seeded, and then it'll just be mowed on a regular basis for now.
Um, are we out of that window of like prime grass seeding?
Uh, actually, we just started because up until a week or so ago, we didn't have any moisture for anything to grow.
Okay.
Now's actually the better time because we are getting some rain and some moisture from time to time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then as far as the sheriff's office, that's supposed to come next to the fire station, who is, who's paying for that?
County.
Is it PBSO?
County.
The county. Are they gonna get started on that anytime soon? I don't know, okay. All right, and the last thing, I know this is the second half of twenty twenty-five, so I'm looking at you guys in twenty twenty-six whose terms are up, and I, I hope that this might be our first real election, so I'm kind of like wanting to get, get started, um, you know, like, uh, Councilmember Gleason, I know that the way you were elected, it just, it was really fast, I just wanna make sure that people who want to apply have like more than enough time to do that and to campaign, I guess, um.
The clerk will be running the election in accordance with the state statutes and all the notifications will be going out as part of the state statute requirements.
Okay, um, because just on the website, it just says like twenty twenty-six vaguely, do we have any idea? Are they all happening at the same time?
Elections in March.
March, okay.
The seats that are available should also be listed, whatever, whatever a candidate is allowed to take part in now, all that information is available on the website.
Oh.
So if a candidate wants to run, or I should say an individual wants to run as a candidate, they can go ahead and do their intent to run at any time, but the details are up on the website.
Okay, and, and seven seconds, um, can you guys run again, the three of you? Okay, all three. Okay, thanks.
Look at that. Ms. Bevan, and then we'll got Mr. Farver.
Stormy Bevan, one six one zero zero, Key Biscayne Lane in Crestwind. I also have twelve questions, but I pared it down to one, by Alicia. Um, I think this is directed to Ken, and I also think Gary was involved in this conversation. I had sent an email identifying a gumbo limbo tree that is at one of our entrance signs that was severely damaged by perhaps lightning, it looks like. I believe Ken responded to it saying he was going to check that might have been Sid's property responsibility, do you know, did you ever?
I, I did, uh, send it over to the guys, um, I'm not sure what the replacement process is on that right this second.
Cause that tree's kind of an eyesore right now, it's very spindly and one little branch this way and one little branch that way, and a gumbo limbo tree is a very beautiful tree when it is a proper specimen, so we could just get that figured out and get it replaced. Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Farver, you are up, sir.
So congratulatory, just wanna say to everybody up here, ladies and gentlemen, thank you on the, uh, strategic meeting and everything you guys did, I was able to attend the first meeting, I didn't make the second one, but I listened online, and I love Gary's, uh, recaps on that and condensing everything, so just wanted to give you guys a big thank you and, uh, for everything you did, and I hope I'm alive or still here to see it to fruition, so we'll see how that goes, and, uh, can I, uh, announce my candidacy?
Sure.